It is six forty-four on Monday, January twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, and we will call the school committee meeting to order. First on our agenda is our consent agenda. Do we have the continued participation in school choice document in the folder?
No, that's just to say that you want to continue the participation.
Sorry.
Oh, okay, so it's just consent to continue?
Yes, right, and then we we create with the admin the seats that are open, and then we present that.
Right, is there any change to the seats or anything like that?
There will be, yes, because enrollments changed, second grade, for example.
Okay, so there are three items in our consent agenda, our minutes from January eighth, the continued participation in school choice for the next school year, not this, but the upcoming school year, and then disposing of some obsolete computer equipment.
Why am I not seeing the school choice?
It's not a document, it's just a vote.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, we're confused on the same thing, but apparently it's different. Okay, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make it.
Is there a second? Okay, A, um, I guess, no.
I had a, I had a question on the minutes for the last meeting.
Yep.
I'm looking at the evaluation, and it says that, uh, hang on, let me find it.
Do you know where the, um, the aromatherapy?
Is that at the library?
Aromatherapy, I don't think they're there.
No, the regional council is having one.
Could it be at the old library? Do they use that in the center?
Is that at the old library in the center of town instead of the school?
No?
Could it be East Meadow? East Meadow.
Could be East Meadow.
Is that open?
The, in the back, the, the back part, yeah. Um.
All right.
So, yes, uh, it said the overall, again, I have to find it. The, uh, the overall rating was proficient slash exemplary.
It was, it was proficient.
Right, and so as much as I love.
(laughing).
I, I, I just feel that it needs to be, um, you know, it needs to be accurate.
Yeah, actually, as we're sitting here, I uploaded the documents anyway, you know, it is, it is in there, so.
But it is in the minutes, so I think we need to.
No, good, good catch, good catch, thank you for that.
Nice try, Kathy, thank you.
(laughing).
So with that amendment, um, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, and we have a second. Any other comments, any questions? All in favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Uh, moving on to visitors' comments, um, the, I think for a good stretch, we had at least one, one visitor coming and sharing some thoughts, ideas, questions. Let's see how we can do that again. Obviously, either folks do not know that, you know, we have these meetings, or if they do know, they may not know that this is open to any suggestions, any questions, any comments. Uh, and at times, we don't even have to answer, it's not really a debate thing, we just take it as is, and we take it, uh, uh, we take advice into consideration, we take any questions under advisement if we have to go and, um, find some answers, so please feel free to come and join us at any one of those meetings.
Emery, I will tell you that any parents who have come to me with questions, I have encouraged them to bring them to the school committee. I said they might not be able to answer it right away, or will have to check into it, but they will listen to you.
Yes, thank you for doing that.
Just so you know, I mean, I have encouraged some of the parents out there.
Yep, looks like we have to do a little more of that encouragement, too. And I'm not, you know, I'm, uh, I completely understand sometimes it's not, uh, clear, or as clear as we would like, like it to be, that, you know, anyone can come here and share with us anything that they want, so we have to reinforce that thought, uh, so that everyone feels free to come in. This is, this is our meeting, our business meeting, but this meeting is open to anyone, and we created this segment to, to do that.
They can make you aware of something they're concerned about.
And that's another thing, if they really cannot join us because of the timing or anything else, feel free to contact us, the superintendent or any member of the school committee. Uh, our email addresses are on our website, and then we will mention it here as we heard it, so. To the extent that it's something we can mention in front of the camera, obviously, so. Okay, with that, um, turning it to our student representative for her report, Annabelle.
Hi.
Hello.
(laughing) Um, so, the Hope Club did their Secret Santa program again for the foster kids, that was last month. Um, and usually it, uh, well, as last year, um, uh, we had a few weeks to work on getting all of the items together. We, we get a wish list of some kids, um, and, uh, usually there's a few weeks, but this week, or this year, there's only one week to get all the, um, the items on those wish lists, and they weren't all, you know, simply you just go to, you know, one store and just everything's done, you know, some of them were more expensive and stuff, and, um, uh, to, the club really, like, pulled it off, like, in one week, they got all the items on the list, um, and it was really, yeah, it was really great to see everyone really come together to make sure that that happened. Um, the junior, senior high school band winter concert was January eighteenth. Uh, it was really great, I went, sounded great. Um, (laugh) the junior high spirit dance is this Friday, January twenty-sixth, at six-thirty to nine-thirty P M. Um, the student council is working on new fundraisers for organizations like Shiners. Um, we're trying to find out what they need and see if we can, um, donate any items or raise any money for them. Um, we're working on a pep rally also, and the sticky note project, um, I think I mentioned it at the last meeting I was at, um, uh, the RSEC mental health, or Regional Student Advisory Council Mental Health Work Group is working to, um, it's, it's, uh, well, we kind of just labeled it the sticky note project, and, um, it's writing positive messages on sticky notes and putting them around the school to, you know, boost positivity and, you know, make a, um, I hate to keep using positive, you know, positive school environment, climate, you know, um.
What do you do with those, just you post them, there's a board and you post those on the board?
Yeah, we ran a lot of ideas around the group, um, and then we were supposed to take it back to our student councils and talk about, like, what we thought would be most effective for our schools, because a lot of the girls in our group, I mean, there's guys, too, but some of the girls said that in their schools, um, they, they have smaller schools, so they could just put it on each locker and it'd be fine, but, um, not every school, the kids use their locker as much, or, um, other schools are larger, and you can't write out, you know, a thousand-something sticky notes and, like, oh, put it on every locker. Um, so, we decided that we were going to, um, our student council decided we were going to, uh, write out, um, one, give one pad of sticky notes to each teacher, and, um, like, once a month, there's something we're gonna, um, well, each sticky note is gonna have, like, a positive message on it, once a month, uh, for A Block, the teacher's gonna put out, like, all the sticky notes on, like, a desk, each desk, and then when the kids come in, you know, it'll just be like a positive reinforcement, you know, for the day. Um, and, uh, so that's, this is like a pilot sort of thing to figure out if that's actually going to, you know, uh, make kids feel better, um, and then we're gonna take that back to the next, uh, RSEC meeting, which is February the second. Um, and we'll see what happens with that, yeah. Um, so, so far in the student body, there have been some comments, questions, and concerns about the Blizzard bags. Uh, (laugh) from the seniors, I'm just kidding. Um, uh, one example is that, um, in addition to homework assignments that teachers already, they like to load up on homework assignments before the snow days, because you assume that's gonna happen, um, but then you have your Blizzard bag assignment on top of that, so it's kind of, and it's not always, um, relevant, because it has to be posted in, in beforehand, so it's not always the most relevant topic. Um, and sometimes it ends up being more like busywork, so it, um, there's been some communication with teachers and, um, you know, uh, administration, uh, in, uh, our advisory, uh, work groups, we, we, our last meeting, we did talk about, you know, things that we could work on. Um, so as more snow days, because I'm sure there's more to come, um, more snow days happen, and more feedback is, you know, collected with student council and everything, I'll, I'll bring that back to you guys. Um, would you find it more helpful to have the information as we still go through the process, or?
Yep.
Okay, not like the end, like after?
We're gonna do both, you know, we will definitely do both. Um, you're actually meeting one of the goals of our new mission, vision is to provide feedback, so that's awesome. So both, so I, I think feedback in both ways, one, so that we can adjust, and we can learn with you about what is working and what's not, and then second, feedback so we can evaluate the whole program, um, once it's gone through its course, um, and so both have a different purpose, and both are very important.
Cool.
Um, so most of the seniors have finished their college applications, which is super exciting, yeah. Super exciting, it's also super stressful, um, but more college flags are being posted on the bulletin board, it's outside of guidance, um, such as Springfield College and Salve Regina, um, but there's more to come. Uh, there's a new one up there today, and, uh, regular decision is, we hear back in, like, the springtime, so, you know, it's gonna keep piling up. Um, so the last SSEC meeting, the State Student Advisory Council, was January eighteenth. Um, due to midterms and finals and such, there was pretty low attendance, um, so there's gonna be an additional meeting, February fifteenth. Um, and despite the low attendance, um, there was, actually got a lot of work done. Um, the commissioner's search has been narrowed down to three candidates. Um, Angelica, I don't know how to say your last name, I'm gonna do my best. Okay, um, Angelica Infante Green, Jeff Riley, and Penny Schwinn. Um, so January twenty-sixth is the final interview, um, it should be livestreamed. Um, I'm not sure where, I assume it's like Facebook or something. Um, and the final decision, um, is the January twenty-ninth. Um, I can send you guys a link to, uh, more information about the candidates or anything if you would like. Um, on top of that, the history and social studies curriculum framework is being revised from its previous, uh, the last revision was in two thousand and three, um, so the priorities for, uh, this two thousand and eighteen revision are to emphasize civics education, improve and improve rigor, clarity, coherence, and to deepen students' understanding of topics, and some updated, uh, well, the, it's, the adoption, the, the meeting where it's supposed to be adopted is in June, so I'm assuming that these are, these next highlights are just, um, things that they would, like priorities, like the same, um.
Annabelle, this is the state adopting this new program, and then after this June, is this what you're saying, after this June, this is gonna be part of eighth grade curriculum? Is it a mandatory thing, is that what it is?
Well, yeah, the, well, when you're mentioning the full-year eighth-grade civics course, that, um, it's not just about eighth grade, like, it's, um, throughout, um, like, the, uh, there's an integration of SEL principles that is gonna be from pre-K to twelfth, so it's, it's every grade level, um, but yeah.
It's a major revision to social studies and history.
Yeah, um.
For the entire?
Yeah. That was just one example that I used. Yeah, um, so I'm assuming these are just priorities, um, but, uh, yeah, one of them is the full-year eighth-grade civics course, um, revised twelfth-grade civic standards, um, one of the questions was, um, about AP Gov, and how that's going to, you know, like, if that's gonna shift or anything, but obviously, it's like the AP framework, so you can't shift that, but everything else, um, according to, because there's not as much, it, civics taught in eighth grade currently, so that's going to be revised in twelfth grade, you know, as it goes up, like, the, you know, information, if that makes sense, um.
So you're starting early, that's what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, and, and, uh, as, yeah, yeah, it's gonna, uh, uh, and then the integration of social, emotional learning principles, um, and an emphasis on media literacy, current events, data analysis, participation, and meaningful debating discussion. You guys have questions on that, I kind of rambled a little bit.
Yeah, there's just a lot of stuff, though, and this is next year, probably there will be a lot of impact. I'm wondering if there isn't a financial impact on top of that, since curriculum is changing.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Which I'm sure the state will provide.
Yeah, just.
The necessary funding.
Yes, you know that I'm so wild here, that's good.
Um, so, the winter clothing drive for Puerto Rican students, um, coming up after the hurricane, um, is still going on. Uh, it, it's sort of like, there are drop locations, like, drop-off locations for clothing, um, around the area. I can also send a link if you guys are interested. Um, student council, uh, we did send an email, but I don't think that is, it, we, uh, fundraised, it was November, um, for, to donate to the relief effort, um, but given, like, this small, you know, amount of, like, kids that we have, it's, um, I don't think we're going to prioritize that, um, but it's really like a community thing, like, you know, um, getting more people to go out, um, and there's no, like, official, like, end date, um, you know, like, deadline, so, um, but we were encouraged to set our own deadline so that we can get more clothing and stuff in, um, in a more timely manner so that these kids have, you know, clothes and stuff.
What are you accepting?
Uh, it just said winter clothes.
Winter clothes, warm, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I can send, um, the link to you guys, um, because Hope is, um, is in doing things. Yeah, um, Hope is also working with, you know, other things, so it's hard to do everything, you know, unfortunately, um. Uh, the Leading the Nation campaign, uh, to celebrate the twenty-fifth year of Massachusetts being number one in education, um, looking for photo submissions for students to be the face of the campaign, and possibly appear on a PBS show they're working on, exciting. Um, the deadline for that is February second, I believe, yeah. Um, and, uh, also, they want pictures of students in their learning environments, you know, doing work and such, um, in labs or in gym.
This is for that PBS show?
Uh, yeah, and just for the campaign itself, um, also, there's gonna be a bus tour. Um, they're still kind of working on logistics, um, but it's supposed to go from one end of the state to the other, it's supposed to end in Boston, um, and just kind of go through different school districts and, you know, highlight student successes and stuff like that, and, you know.
Always gonna go all the way to Worcester and then go back to.
(laughing). All the way to Worcester.
Yeah.
Um, so, the wellness work group, they're working on a Wellness Week in the spring to highlight, uh, wellness, um, health, and the importance of, um, health and wellness classes, um, and all the work that goes on in that. Um, they're also working on a spreadsheet, uh, of schools that with the wellness policies, um, if they have a wellness policy, if they don't, and when it was last updated, um, to see if they're in compliance with the, um, the laws for that, because they're supposed to be updated every year. Um, also with the Wellness Week, they're working on, um, a booklet, um, with pictures of, similar to the Leading the Nation campaign, um, pictures of, uh, students doing, um, fun fundraiser things, um, and sort of the, sort of like the things you would see in, like, Spirit Week, um, things like that, just for fundraisers, um, and in their wellness classes and stuff like that, um, just, you know, to highlight and celebrate, like, the work that's going on. Um, the mental health work group, there were three of us, uh, it was very small, so, um, hopefully we can get more work done at the February meeting. Um, but we decided to do a continuation of the sticky note projects, um, that my RSEC is already working on, but, um, bring that into the other RSECs, too, and see if we can really spread that out. Um, and the civics group is working on voter registration and figuring out how to fill gaps in the civics framework. I'm not sure how that's working now, that, um, because we, we got the briefing on the, the framework revisions, uh, at the beginning of the meeting, but they had already, you know, gone forward with plans of what they wanted to do, so I'm not sure how that's going to play out for that group, but, um, as usual, I'll bring more information back to you guys as I get it.
This is voter registration in Massachusetts before November, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
For those who are eligible.
Cool. So I asked Annabelle, I said, do you have anything to share, you know, for the meeting? Looks like you have a lot more to share than, than I have, so, that's good.
Yeah, I can, you know.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Any questions?
Yeah, sounds great.
Yeah, the, um, this whole curriculum thing, which we just found out about, that's probably something that is gonna require some conversation, I mean, if it's gonna have huge budget, uh, budget impact, uh, next year, as Deanne said, you know, even though they're gonna give us a lot of money for it.
Mm.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll get, uh, guidelines from the state around, um, curriculum guides and, you know, when it's adopted, so the, it, the state will take the lead on timelines and expectation.
And do they normally give a decent amount of time before it need, yeah, that's, I mean, they have it in the past.
Right.
So, this might be something that we take into consideration with the upcoming budget. Now, of course, we don't, we don't have any figures, but I think in, at least we can probably speak in general terms.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's worth at least adding something.
Right, a curriculum work group, you know, with so many hours, and.
Right.
Because it does have to be K-12, so.
And even if, if it's a guesstimate on what, um, a curriculum change would, would cost, I mean, we've done curriculum changes, so.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd at least rather see something in there.
Yeah, so the, the nice thing is, based on what you just shared with us, is that they are letting the student body know that, you know, there are all these changes coming. The funny thing is that we do not put the curriculum together, but the school committee has approved the curriculum changes. We did not hear anything, we did not know anything, so there are all these, uh, activities going on, but, uh, you know, one party is informed, the other party is not, but I still love the fact that they are, they are really, uh, pulling students into those conversations. The other thing that I, I, I'm wondering is, is there a way to share some of these things that, you know, that appear to be pretty, uh, interesting events, activities, whatever it is, to some portion of a website, or whatever?
Yeah, I made a whole bunch of notes, yeah, as we were talking, it was like, oh, oh, yes.
Yeah, great, this was great, Annabelle, thank you very much.
Um, um, if, if you guys just wanna let me know what links you want, um, I can just send you.
Yeah, if you can send those, um, those pieces of information that you have.
Yeah, um, the commissioner's search, the, do you guys want the framework thing, and then the, the winter clothing drive?
Yep, please, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, did you have to leave? Okay, so, thank you.
Sounds a long exit, you know?
Take your time, take your time.
Yeah, we got some kind of kiln, probably hour, two hour.
Okay, so moving on to new business, um, we have two items on our new business. Uh, two of them, both of them are related to, um, uh, vendor services that we have. The first one is related to lunch services and Chartwell's contract. Uh, the second one is related to TMS contract, which is, uh, our business management services. So, um, I mean, we had a lot of conversations around these services, uh, and, uh, what, last time when we talked about it, we thought that it may be a healthy thing for us to really, uh, explore, uh, how these things are done, what other options we may have, especially given that our budget, uh, is constrained, some of the activities are on the budget, um, really turn around and then come back to, uh, some of the vendor relations that we have or vendor services that we get, so, uh, so we wanted to bring this to the committee, have a conversation around it, and see if there is an interest to, for either both of these items to, uh, go out for, uh, for bids, and this year, both of these contracts are, are up anyway, and we did the same thing last year, anyway.
I had a question on the lunch services, considering that we're going to have a state-of-the-art kitchen in the new school. I mean, is bringing it back in-house an option?
I, I wanted to ask, if we're gonna go through the, uh, the hassle of going out to bid, if we could also see what it would cost for us to bring it back in houses, as well as that.
Right.
That is a great point, and thank you for bringing that up. How does that work, do, um, if we decide to do it in-house, or we wanna explore that, that, our understanding seems to be that, that can be independent of the bid if we go out for anything like that. Okay, so we can do some research to see if our kitchen is good enough, uh, to offer the services. The advantage, I guess, is that now all of our schools will be right here.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I mean, you'd be most likely, uh, having a school lunch, um, director, uh, who would basically design and run the program, so.
And then we would need chefs or cooks, I don't know what they're called, um, in a school.
And servers, and.
Right.
Right.
But some of that we're already paying for to some degree anyway, but then.
Right, through a contract.
Right, exactly, so it's, um, and I don't even know if that could be something that, you know, that, the director level could be something that's a shared service.
Shared service with?
With another district.
So we, our, our, um, school lunch manager, um, is Andrew, and so we already share him, so can it be done? Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I think finding another partner.
Right.
Um, that is, uh, potentially building a program or has a program and wants to share, um, and wants to consider sharing that cost.
Because obviously, if we're, if Andrew is already committing to more than one district, then clearly, we don't need somebody full-time, but, I mean, you know, we've, we've come down this road before, finding somebody for a part-time, especially at a director level, I mean, that's, that's, that's a tough thing to hire.
Well, I think in Granby, we're a bit unique in that, and, and Andrew has done that, you know, he's on the serving line, he's subbing when people are out, he's, you know, so I think that, you know, certainly, the, um, director of food services happens sort of in addition to the actual, you know, planning and prepping, or serving of the meals, so. Andrew's always present, so there's a lot of work that needs to get done.
Right, so then your, um, job description becomes critical.
Yes, yeah.
What are your thoughts on that, your initial thoughts on?
My initial thoughts are like, huh, it's another program, but I certainly understand, um, and have heard other districts struggling with declining enrollment and food service contracts. Um, whether or not the, the result is in, in, in district, that I haven't done, but if you're saying, you know, what are my thoughts, my first thoughts would be to reach out to, um, superintendents who have in-district programs and find out, you know, how they are doing, and if they are, how are they organized? Um, you know, how much stress is it in the district, are we pushing people too thin? Um, because we already know, you know, we have multiple people doing multiple things, um, in, in central office and at the building level, so, but I, I think it's. But I, I think it's a good question, and I, I think it, it deserves some thought and some research and reaching out to other communities.
If I had to take a guess, I would say that other districts who are, who do, who do do it in-house are probably larger districts.
Yeah, Belcher Town is one, for instance.
I mean, I, I, that's just my initial thought.
Yeah.
Um, and there's a reason why we farmed it out in the first place.
True.
It's just, you know, it would be nice to fully utilize that brand-new state-of-the-art kitchen that we have.
Plus, plus effect if the two of them are so close together.
Right.
Really, you have one operation, we'll satellite piece off to the side, it's just not really that complicated to do.
Yeah, yeah, and.
In theory.
Yes. I mean, regardless of how you look at it, even when we had our highest enrollment, we were still smaller than some of those districts, and some people remember that, you know, lunch services were pretty good at one point in time. I did not have firsthand experience with that, I wasn't on the committee. Um, and I mean, we're basically exploring, so it doesn't really hurt to, to look at the option. The new kitchen is one asset that we have. Um, this is actually a town that takes pride in calling itself an agricultural town, or at least we have uh, uh historical agricultural roots. So there may be some opportunities to put all those together and explore our options. I mean, it doesn't hurt, at the end, if we say, you know, no, this, this is not gonna work, then that's fine too, but because we're in January, it gives us enough time, hopefully, to be able to uh investigate and see what we can do, or we cannot do.
Yes, and I hear your concerns, you know, one more, because, you know, that is something that we do need to be mindful of, is adding uh another change.
Yeah.
Well, there's, there's, there's other complications too, it's like with Chartwells, you can log into a system, maybe you have to pay for it, and you can still get the same system, but you can log into the system and pay your lunch.
Hmm.
Right, so what would we have to do with that aspect of it too?
Right.
Yeah.
A lot of questions.
You can go back to.
But I do think.
Tokens.
Yeah, there's a lot, I, I think, if I'm hearing you correctly, it is to, you know, engage with some districts that are doing in-house lunch programs and find out what the answers to some of those questions are.
Right.
And certainly I'd be happy to report back in February, on the sixth, fifth?
I'd be very surprised to find that bringing it in-house is gonna be the better option. I know we want it to be, I'm not saying it wouldn't be ideal, I just think that having Chartwell's managing has been just one less thing to have to really manage and worry about in-house.
Yes, because we are talking about a program from scratch, I mean, we are.
We need some, yeah. I, I'd just be so afraid to make that decision and find out, now we have thirty thousand dollar hole instead of
Right, and I know.
The ten that we can plan on. That's a really tricky, that's tricky.
And there are some districts, I believe, in the area that have, um, that either had or have currently in-house and have investigated going out and um using a service um and have stayed with an internal, so I, I can, I can ask around and I can get you some information, and I think it's important to understand that, you know, I think there's a commitment on the school committee's part to quality, um and that that should be part of the question, um, you know, your surveys around quality of, of food and, you know, percent of meals and all of that. So I will try to put together a rubric and send it out to superintendents and get some information for you.
I mean, we have, I agree that we may find out it's not really cost-effective and we, we may need to do something else. Regardless of what it is, going out to bid at least allows us to see what is available out there and what is not. But with that, some of these costs, as you were saying, it's already built in what we are paying right now, whether it's labor or other things. In essence, the lunch programs were thought of as self-paying programs, so students go and buy their lunch and, you know, it just covers for itself. The tricky part is the labor part, how do you manage it? Who's gonna be serving it, who's gonna be doing it, and then technology part comes in, how do you really make sure that you have, uh, you know, you have uh payments in a, in a uh prompt manner, and then uh you can assess whether there are deficits uh in real time. You know, obviously have to investigate, but my hope is that regardless of what the decision is, if we find out what the options were, it may make us feel better, one. Number two, this is about accountability as well, it allows us to uh put both sides of the story in, uh in front of everyone when budget time comes to say that these are the things that we found and we went out and investigated. This is not really to make a decision here based on what our gut feeling is, because, you know, as I said, you may well be right. This is us really taking a step back and objectively looking at what the, what the um options are and how much they cost. Do we, do we vote to go out to bid, or do we just say we're going out to bid? Do you remember?
Um.
Let's just vote, if we don't remember.
I think we vote.
Alright.
Yes.
I, I just have one more thing, I, I, I saw the thing on the agenda and I thought they were gonna be here, so I started looking. The last sheet I had was for December, right, and, and I was just like, really, really compounded how our meals can go down by five percent, but our cost for the food can go up eight percent, so it's like a three percent higher than it's just, I, I don't, I don't understand how that can happen.
They were supposed to be here, weren't they?
They were, today, that's what we asked for, and I don't know if Mark shared that with them or not, but.
I believe he did, um, so Mark was on vacation this week, so last weekend, today, he'll be here on Thursday, so.
Okay, alright, so, but you're right, we, we did, we did ask last time and we mentioned the same thing, we had the same concern that uh numbers are moving in opposite directions and the magnitudes don't necessarily make sense, um, so. Maybe next time we can have them here and have a conversation with them, that will be great. Any questions on the first item, uh related to lunch services? Is there a motion to, um, to go to bids for lunch services for the uh school year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen?
Make that motion?
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Any other comments, questions, concerns?
I, I just, I maybe wanna add the fact that we're gonna ask to get a little research done as to what it would cost to do it in-house too, as well as go out to bid.
Actually, that's a great point, yes.
That's right.
Yeah, so, that's, that's, so I will amend my question, and then I will ask you to go with that. Um, we're gonna go out to bid and we're gonna do research uh around potentially bringing the service in-house in light of the new kitchen that is built next door in the new building, right? Is it a better one? Okay, so.
So we would not wanna go to bid unless we
No, we, we.
Know that we are not going to do an internal.
Is that how we wanna approach it? I'm open both ways, but it may delay us.
Okay.
Cause I don't know how quickly we're gonna be able to do a full research. I think doing those concurrently and finding out, you know, this is the cost of this, that is the cost of that, it doesn't.
That was my assumption.
Yeah.
Okay.
If, well, I guess my question is, if we go out to bid, are we locked into accepting one of those bids, or do we still have the option?
Nope.
That's what I would have thought, but just wanna make sure.
We're not, we're not, I mean, there may be, great point, there may be some time management issue there to make sure that one is not so far out and one happens so quickly, we have to make a decision. But all bids come with a deadline to them anyway, but, you know, all these uh numbers are valid until such and such date, uh so long as we know that and we finish that research by then, we should be in good shape. Okay, so with that, can we renew the motion then?
Sure, so I move that we go out to bid for the lunch services uh contract and also do due diligence on finding feasibility for it to come in-house.
Cool, thank you.
A second, okay.
Any other comments or questions? Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next is our business management services, um, this is related to their, their contract is up anyway, uh just like Chartwell's, so we have to go out to bid, um. As we go out to bid, if there was an interest to have a business manager in-house, is that part of the same bid? So when we go out, I, I'm asking because I don't know, when we go out to bid, do we specify whether we are looking for such and such individual to work in the district, or are we uh com- combining it with services slash potential in-house?
So I think if you're um creating a bid for the contract service.
Yeah.
Uh, that's a different bid than if we were going to post for a job opening as a school business manager for the Granby Public Schools.
So we would have to do, do two things, okay, alright.
Well, I think before we even do that, we have to back it up probably five or six steps. We have to start with a discussion here, right?
Yeah.
No, I'm just asking, I don't even know what it is, so.
So they're two separate process, processes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, now we're five steps back.
Okay.
Floor is yours.
Oh, well, I didn't necessarily want the floor.
So, a school business manager would be someone who we would expect to be at all school committee meetings, at our town meetings, someone that we would have access to.
It would be a full-time business manager working in the business, in the front office, um. And our contract with T M S now is what?
Two days, and on-call, so um we do have access at all times, but a physical presence twice a week.
And the cost of that contract?
And the once a month.
So I think seventy-five thousand dollars a year.
I did forget to check, I apologize, at seventy or seventy-five?
Yeah, I think it's seventy-five as well, um, and we know that if we were to bring somebody in-house, well, we don't know that for sure, but I'm, I'm assuming that it's going to.
Yes.
Probably around the ninety, ninety to a hundred thousand dollar range. Didn't Belcher Town just hire somebody?
No, they just, um, they posted, um, as far as I can see online, uh for a range of ninety-nine to a hundred and four thousand plus.
But you'd have access to that person five days.
Every day, yes.
And it'd be, so you could also look at combining somebody, maybe another position if you didn't need.
Well, that's actually a good point. I was thinking whether, I, I don't know if there is an example of it, but if we need someone to manage lunch services,
Mm-hmm.
which essentially is a financial management of lunch services, right? Um, I don't know if there is any example of that kinda stuff.
I, my, my, my initial thought is.
I think you're two different people.
Yes.
It may be.
Well, I just, let me just finish my thought.
Yeah.
Um, we already are strapped with the, I think we would all agree, that we would love to have more time spent currently with our business manager, right? It would be wonderful to have him here four days a week, every day, so the thought of splitting, you know, you're already cutting down a business person to what, two and a half days, if they're sharing a, a, a full other director-level position to run a lunch program.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking more along the line of the data manager position.
Maybe.
Looking for somebody to help pull data and numbers.
Once upon a time, this school system had one person who managed the lunch program, the buses, and the technology. And let me tell you, that person was run ragged.
Yeah.
I was.
You could talk to David, and because I think when he started here.
He picks that up.
If my memory serves me correct, that is part of the um job he had.
Yeah, so um, here's, here's the way I look at things, it doesn't hurt to investigate.
Mm-hmm.
Also, I realize that there is at least one district where the same person is doing multiple jobs, uh including in an administrative position, uh, right?
Yeah.
So it's, it's not that, it's not being done, that, is it easy? Is it feasible? Does it cause issues? We can find out, but uh I don't know that, you know, from the get-go, limiting our options is what we wanna do, we just wanna see what happens. Cause this is basically a matter, school finances are not, I mean, there are some obviously legal things and all that stuff, and uh we all know that, not everybody understands them, but the, the primary issue, I guess, is the certification part of it, not everybody's really certified to be a school business manager. I don't know if there is such a requirement for lunch services and such, so that might already present uh a challenge from the get-go, but I don't know, I mean, what I don't know, I love to learn, so uh if we, you know, if the opportunity presents itself, uh we can have that conversation at that time.
So, if I'm hearing you correctly, you are asking me to reach out to other districts to find out how they organize their business office, what kinds of arrangements do they have, what kind of work are their business managers doing? If they're not a contract, if they're not contracted services.
Uh, actually, that's a good place to start, because then we can, we can actually understand if in other districts a business manager has the time to handle other responsibilities, other departmental responsibilities. Um. Yeah, but, you know, again, we have to, we have to be comparing apples to apples too.
Right, so I think that's one of the, you know, when you, when you reach out, it is to find like-sized districts, um, you know, districts that have comparable enrollments, um comparable size, pops, you know, uh populations generally the same budget size, and so there may not be so many close to us. We may be looking out across, you know, the Commonwealth, and that presents other challenges, but, you know, I think, you know, I think getting a, a broad idea of, of how business offices are, are organized, I think will be helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I, I would, personally, I would like to look at it functionally, as much as, you know, size-wise.
Yep.
Because it, it seems to me that where there are challenges to any financial management uh position is if there are multiple items that you have to manage, and some of those have, I don't know, compliance issues, some of them have legal issues, whatever, you have to be knowledgeable on those, it just adds, but at the end of the day, you know, uh what is managed is, is, is numbers. I mean, it's, it's really looking at the same set of numbers with the same codes, I mean, at least we have that advantage, or it may be a complication uh for the school districts. Everything is done similarly, I'm wondering whether or not the same individuals may have the, you know, the, the business acumen to say, I understand this side and I understand something else too, like data management. Um, that may add a complication if we're gonna go out with a posting, because I guess then the posting has to mention that we're, we may be looking for some additional qualities, if they exist.
Yeah, so we would.
In these individuals, so does it mean that tonight we can't, we should not uh make a decision on this? Okay, does that, does that really shorten our window to be able to successfully do this search?
No, if that's the direction that you go in or a bid, I think, I think taking two weeks to get some information for you in both situations, I think will help shape whether it's a, a bid for another service provider, so that everyone has an opportunity to bid that again, um, or the decision to uh potentially go for uh in-house business manager.
Okay.
I, I don't think two weeks is going to, you know, set it back, whatever the process.
Right.
Would four weeks?
Oh, you're not gonna be here.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, let me, let me put a timeline together, I don't think so. Cause that would be.
Mid, mid February.
No, no, I don't think so.
February fifth, is that, is that a Monday?
Mm-hmm.
That's two weeks from now.
Yeah, and the nineteenth would be the second Monday.
I don't know.
If that's during school vacation, you don't have a meeting scheduled for the nineteenth.
Are you available on the twelfth?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have anything on the twelfth? Do we have anything on the twelfth?
Policy so can we, although.
We can, we can move that, I guess.
Definitely.
We could do one of two things. You could move the fifth to the twelfth. And just have one meeting if there wasn't a lot on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, to be honest with you, I, I.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, it, it seems as though you would need a little more time anyway.
I may need a little more time now that I'm thinking about it, yeah.
I would, I would rather see, I would rather see it done thoroughly where you're not pressed for time. Then, you know, have you rushed and.
Right.
Yeah, so I just really like to make sure we, we've had time to research it correctly and talk about it.
Right. That's why, I mean, if we could pull it off, I mean, with three weeks.
Yeah.
Be more.
So that's the twelfth.
That would be the twelfth.
And I would prefer not to delay. I, I, I understand all the quality concerns, but I don't know how much.
Right.
Really, uh, other than reaching out and finding out some of these things with folks that you may already be familiar with. Uh, we're just trying to have a baseline, uh, and then based on information go out.
Yep.
And we're not really doing a full research on this, that's gonna be the posting itself.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, um.
So are, are we looking at doing a meeting on the twelfth then?
I, I guess so.
The fifth and, the fifth and the twelfth or just the twelfth?
Let's just hold the fifth. Uh, but would you like to be part of that conversation if there is, I mean, we're not gonna talk anything, but you're gonna hear her feedback, okay.
That's.
Well, the fifth we actually have to have because uh, we invited Joe Shea to, um, from the Hampshire. Uh, Insurance Trust to come and speak to the insurance changes that are coming.
Is there an objection to have a short meeting on the fifth and short meeting on the twelfth?
That's fine.
Okay, let's do that. So let's keep the fifth, we have already a guest coming.
Mm-hmm.
And then um, we'll meet on the twelfth too.
So we can maybe do policy too.
Yeah. Yep.
Alright, so the same time?
Yes, six, six, uh, six thirty.
Kathy, can we make sure we post that?
Maybe.
Make sure.
So it will only be for um, the business manager?
Yes. Thank you, Kathy, for uh, for your confidence in us.
She's writing that minute.
Yes. Alright, so. Uh, we'll wait for your investigation to conclude and then we'll hear from you and then we'll go from there. Okay. Thank you, good conversation. Um, going to old business, do we have anything on the strategic plan?
Uh, we are meeting on Wednesday, twenty-fourth.
Okay.
And we should be wrapping up, um, we have mission and vision complete. Uh, we have four strategies and we're working within each of those. We have the language for each of them and then um. Action items under each.
Did you say on the twenty-fourth?
First. Thirty-first, sorry, twenty-fourth is, I'm getting my meetings mixed up. Thank you, thirty-first.
Can't do that either.
You and your traveling.
Okay, so we have nothing else on the strategic plan?
No.
Okay.
No, but hopefully, you know, I would say by mid-February, we should have a, a plan. I would, I would hope, after the thirty-first, so.
Yeah, regardless of what it is, something by March uh, to be presented to the school committee?
Yes.
Okay, cool. You know what would be nice? I think we may have done it last time too, but I'm not hundred percent sure. If we can invite the committee.
Yeah.
Okay, you already thought of that. Um, anything new on the budget that you are aware of?
No, we are meeting with the select board on Thursday evening to go over the requests and provide um. Some information that they had requested around some contract, um, some language for um, vocational education requirements, which is a good question.
Yeah.
And um, uh, class size information that they wanted for uh, grade level two, so happy to do that.
So we'll be there on Thursday. It should be a fairly quick conversation, but uh, obviously to make sure that the numbers are exactly what, what they presented. We're gonna be sharing the uh, uh, contracts and then uh, show the legal uh, ground for. The vocational uh, student going out.
Cheryl, you know you got another second grader today.
No, I didn't. That's, what is up with second grader? They are like.
Yeah.
Little tulips, they just keep popping up all over the place. Oh, no, that's right, they did tell me.
Oh, yes.
So I had two questions on, on this before we move off the budget. Um, what was the outcome with setting up the joint meetings? Were, were we supposed to take the lead on that? How, how was that supposed to happen? Cause I know, I know one of the select members was a little upset that, or seemed a little confused as to why it hadn't started taking place.
Yeah, I, I didn't really, I didn't really view it as being upset. I actually thought that that was a great comment because that's exactly what we discussed. So on our side, we have a calendar that already was shared and the bylaw committee uh, suggested a couple of uh, small changes. And they will incorporate it in the bylaws even as a, uh, as a calendar for uh, budget review. But I believe, we also believe that we, as a school committee, we will continue to invite. Um, both of those committees, finance committee and the select board for a joint meeting three times, not quarterly, but three quarters. And the uh, the opportune time for us to have those conversations seem to be right after Oc- October first. After we do our first submission of all the numbers to DESI, so that's our first set of official numbers. After January first, which is when we update our numbers, if there is any update, and one more around the budget time. I think two of those are on the calendar already, so we are, uh, we will reach out uh, three times a year. If there is a way for us to really memorialize that so that it becomes a routine uh, school committee. Um, invitation, that would be great, but that's our intent, I guess, to invite them three times a year. Right after October first, right after uh, January first and uh, probably in March or April for uh, review of the budget.
And after that meeting, uh, it seemed to me that we needed to sort of recap in writing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, or summarize. Because I still felt a little unclear as to the boundaries around these unanticipated. Um, unbudgeted.
Yeah.
Sources.
It just seemed to me like there wasn't gonna be much use for that, cause it had to be below a certain threshold.
Between eight and twelve thousand, right?
And it had to be before we actually spent the money for it. So I was thinking at first, well, maybe the, the freezer or walk-in breakdown would have worked. But then no, you can't wait three weeks to get a repair done on a freezer or walk-in, so.
We won't even know if they'll approve it until they reply to our email thirty days later.
So.
Maybe we should bring Pony Express back.
So as I understood it, it was, if it was somewhere between eight and twelve thousand. It was to bring it directly to the finance committee for, for their approval. And if it was any more than that, but under a hundred thirty thousand dollars. We were to go to the select board and make a formal request for a motion on town floor. Is that, is that your understanding or?
With the, with, with the addition of, when we went to the finance committee, it had to be something that we hadn't already committed to. Right?
Yeah.
Cause that's what he kept saying, you had already spent the money anyways, so there wasn't anything we could do about it.
But they did it for the police. They, they went for them for their overtime pay after, after it was already paid.
Yeah.
And until there's a policy that's shown to me and explains to me what the rules are for every department within this town. I feel like they don't know. Like they, I don't think there's a plan. Um, they were saying something informal, formal, it's a small town and they did it for this person, but then we were, it, it was. They were all over the map. We did not get a clear answer to very clear questions and it's incredibly frustrating. So I think what we need to do is like Diane said, put, craft together a, a written, this is our understanding from our meeting. And uh, share it with Chris Martin and the select board and include members of the finance committee. I, I don't like all this, well, I emailed this guy and then I have to wait two weeks and if they don't say yes, then I have to go. What is going on? Like this is crazy pants.
Yeah.
I, how do you, I'd get fired from my job if I ever acted like that. Like I, I just can't even imagine how you run a town if you can't reply to a single email with, within thirty days. That just seems crazy to me. And it speaks to the bigger problem that we're having. The school committee is being looked at, scrutinized daily. We have huge town votes and everyone is, and they just, they probably don't want the attention. They just don't wanna play with it, but they have to. The select board are elected officials just like us. Their responsibility is to figure out a way to unite. These three committees of people so that we can get clear answer and direction when we ask for it. Cause we're not asking for a huge thing, we just wanna know, how do we do this one thing? And we've been given at least three different versions of something and it's very frustrating. I went back and watched the meeting from last year. Um, we did everything that we were told to do to the letter, to the letter. We did everything that was asked of us. Cheryl's very timely, very thoroughly sent everything that she had been asked by the committee to do. And it has been four and a half months and we, now we're being told that we didn't do it right. And yep, I want that on the camera.
It's already there.
So it's very, I'm, I'm very frustrated. I don't, and I just find it impossible. To just get some simple answers sometimes, um, and it's a problem and, and we're paying for it. The kids are ultimately paying for it and that's unfortunate.
Sure. You had something?
Uh, can't remember what it is now, so I must have a metaphor.
So I think we all walked away with uh, similar impressions that there, there was no standard.
No.
Uh, and if there is one, it, you know, it, it's, you know, by definition, no standard because there was no agreement on it.
Mm-hmm.
Cause it just uh, changed during our conversation as well. Someone is working on this kind of stuff. I know that uh, as much as I understand and uh, empathize and share your frustration. I know that it takes a little while to really get to the point where everybody understands. I think we're doing the right thing. Uh, regardless of the intent, regardless of trepidations, the fact that we, the three committees were together that day and if we can do more of it. Gradually, we're, we'll get to the point where there will be more conversations. It's a matter of really understanding each other, learning to share. Understanding that we're trying to be as trusting and transparent as we can be. That doesn't happen overnight and I, you know, hopefully uh, we are going in the right direction. All that said, I walked away having no idea what the rules were. So all I understood is that for very small amounts. That's the impression I got. We go to the finance committee and then, you know, wait a little bit, which was uh, a, a month, I think, or four weeks, whatever. We were told and then just go to the select board. Then I said to myself, for any amount, I would go to the finance committee, wait for that one month and then go to the select board. But doesn't change the fact that we have an opportunity to really put together something and say, this is our suggestion and show our reasons for it. Not because, you know, eh, one month looks good because it has thirty or thirty-one days, except for February. Uh, we have to have a better explanation. Actually, what it does to us, it sometimes, especially as we get closer to the budget season. It puts us in a condition, in a situation, in a position where we now are struggling to balance certain things. And we don't know whether or not we're gonna have the right funds to be able to do certain things. For instance, the questions that the select board asked are the right questions. What are the contracts? What are the exact numbers on the contracts? What uh, legal um, ground do we have to really honor this type of contract, all those good questions? But we need to have, we need to have a tighter window to address these financial issues. Cause as we explained, three of the four items were presented, were mandates. There is nothing we can do about it. Even if the school committee said, you know what, we're not even gonna mention it, somebody will come and ask us for that service because that's, we are legally bound. That should be the ground o- of our request to create a standard that says, we would like to have these conversations in shorter amount than a month. Or in this case, uh, you're right, it's four and a half months. I misspoke during the uh, meeting, I said three and a half. But it's been four and a half months because since September, since the last time we put it out there, it's, it's over four months, so. We all get frustrated, uh, and you know, how, how, you know, how, uh, I get uh, frustrated as well. Uh, that's, that's fine and that's fair and that's only understandable. Uh, but we also have to just calm down, cool off and put something together, uh, see how we can make it work and we have to try.
Absolutely. You know, um, we can still standardize our process.
Yes.
Just because, just because the process isn't standardized, we still have the opportunity right now to. Set our own policy and how we wanna m- move forth.
And we should do, that's what I'm saying, we should do that.
Not only for the current school committee, but for school committees moving forward, so there, there's some clear guidelines.
Yeah, well, absolutely.
Um.
My concern is that we may not get the response just because we could, we create a policy. It eventually goes to the point where we have to, we have to have an agreement and hopefully we'll, we'll get there. But nothing keeps us from creating our own standard and we should. We should say, this is.
Well, and I think defining as we know it, what the processes with the processes with the town are, so for example. The reserve fund transfers are from the reserve fund accounts, those are the eight to twelve thousand, but up to a hundred and thirty thousand. In the case of something catastrophic where you're the police department or fire department. So, you know, that is the piece where as the superintendent, I now understand that. And I can write that in to our business policy that says, if there is a reserve fund transfer request, this is what it is. This is the process that has been used. We don't, we don't wait more than four weeks, it goes, so that can be documented. And then the second piece, which is, you know, unanticipated expenses that the finance committee will not address, go directly to the select board, that's the above. And so that's working through the town manager directly with the, with the select board to say, these are unanticipated. And, and get those on, on, on the docket earlier. And now I know. So now that can be embedded in what we know and put into pa- you know, down on paper, so it's not forgotten. And, and that's the pro- part of what you're saying, which is, this is our process.
And can we, you know, that's what I would like to move forward on.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
I'd like to see that in writing and whatever, you know, business policy you have in-house, um, I think that needs to be formalized. Because it's something that continually, you know, we've come up against, I mean, in the four years that I've been on this committee. So I think in that regard, we're, we're tightening the, the framework and what we have to date is about as tight as we can get. Given the last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's tight enough to get it in writing.
Yes, agreed.
Alright, so. That brings us to our reports. You have a superintendent's report.
We do, and I do not have um, executive session unless you do, so I just wanted to let you know that. Um. Whoops. So I'm going back a little bit. I wanted to thank Anne Marie Sapowski, the admin assistant at uh, East Meadow School. She had sent lots of pictures of the holiday luncheon that I am just now getting to um, put up on the superintendent update. So um, I will put those up on the webpage. So thank you and thank you for everyone who was involved in that event. Um, as Annabelle had referenced, we have piloted our Blizzard bags for two snow days. We are receiving and responding to um, everyone's questions and concerns. Uh, we will be sending out a survey in late spring, so please be sure to share your thoughts and ideas. I've had um, a handful of conversations with parents and teachers, um, understanding that this is a pilot. And right now, if, if we have sent home assignments that students are struggling with. Please contact your child's teacher and the building principal so that we can make adjustments accordingly. Um, I've also heard some great stories about siblings helping younger siblings, um, really not even asked for. It was just that learning was happening at home and so those were really um, exciting stories for me to hear. Uh, that is, one of the goals is to expand learning beyond the classroom, so. Um. Uh, it's been a mixed bag, sorry to mix metaphors, uh, of the responses that we've received, um, and the weather this winter. Um, going back a wee bit, thanks to all who pitched in at our elementary holiday luncheons, um, this is a wonderful. Um, going back a wee bit, thanks to all who pitched in at our elementary holiday luncheons. Um, this is a wonderful tradition that we share in the Grammy Public Schools. And the new East Meadow School is really taking shape. We did a walkthrough the other day. Uh, we are so excited to welcome our fourth through sixth graders in February. Uh, we are planning some tours and an open house opportunities for everyone, so please stay tuned. We will be posting those shortly. Um, as long as we can get in there before and that they stay on time. Uh, we would like to get the public in as soon as possible to see the new part of the building. Um, as always, thanks to everyone for, um, everything that you do to make Grammy Public Schools a great place to learn and grow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Cheryl on that? Do we have a meeting? Alright, so no collaborative. Uh, the building committee, we talked exactly this. Everything seems to be on track. And East Meadow will be moving into the new building in February. Uh, hopefully, uh, nothing changes because, uh, we're exactly on time. Uh, they were gonna move, they were gonna move the teachers', um, materials and desks. And then the rest of it was gonna be done gradually during the break. Uh, when the students come back, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a new school, at least for a few months for them. Then during summer, they're gonna be moved back and West Street will be moved up. And, uh, and we're gonna have our grand opening in September, so. Uh, the, the name was confirmed. What did we decide that was the case?
East Meadow School.
East Meadow School.
People in town will be very happy.
Yes.
So two things that we had to confirm. One was whether or not we could, we could use the same name. So we asked the state, the state said, yes, apparently. Number two, there are different, uh, places where it says East Meadow School and East Meadow Elementary, I guess. So we have to find out which one is the official in state books and turns out it's East Meadow School, so we, we're staying with that.
And it saves us on sign.
Yes.
Even just like envelopes and car, business cards and, right? Do they have any? I'm sure Mr. Latorre has that.
Uh, policy subcommittee, I'm sure.
Uh, we have a meeting scheduled. But we haven't. That's right, we were snowed out.
Yes, and we did not have a Blizzard bag to do work at home, so.
So February twelfth.
Okay, so that actually, all we have for our open session, um, and we don't have an executive session today.
Do not.
Okay, we do not have one then. Um, was there anything else that we did not cover, any suggestions for our upcoming meeting? Um, as we decided, we're gonna have a meeting on the fifth. We have a guest, a short one. And then we're gonna have a meeting on the twelfth. And no meeting on the nineteenth because it's gonna be school vacation week. Okay, so with that, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, thank you. Good night.